We will uh call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order at five o'clock. On uh October fifth. Uh did everybody have an opportunity to uh well, I should back up and say we do have a quorum. We have four as Daphne indicated before. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting? And if so, do you have any comments?
I move for approval.
I would second.
Okay, so uh John, did you move to approve?
I did.
Okay, and then Dave seconded uh all in favor of uh accepting the meeting minutes from last meeting signify by saying aye. Okay, so that passed four to zero. Um Daphne, do you have any any city business that you would like to address with the zoning board?
Um at this time, so um I'll just do a brief overview. We did not receive any public comments. Um we sent even I believe typically we send a two hundred foot radius. We sent a three hundred foot radius this time of mailers. Um and we did not hear back from any property owners um nearby.
Okay. Uh are there any other issues the board members would like to bring up?
No.
Okay, uh with that, Daphne, would you please read the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Sure, yes. So this is for a variance from height limitation zoning um for sixteen thirty Aspen Commons. Um and the request is as follows. Um Dwayne Johnson of Kenopkin Bruce Architects on behalf of property manager, property owner John Lee J of LZ Ventures. Is requesting approval of a variance from the maximum height allowed for structures located near Middleton Municipal Airport Maury Field. Also known by airport code C twenty nine. The height, the city's height limitation zoning ordinance protects navigable airspace within three miles of the airport. The applicant is requesting approval to construct a one hundred twenty-three unit twelve-story residential building. That would extend to an elevation of one thousand ninety-five feet above mean sea level. The city's HLZO map identifies a height of one thousand seventy-five feet at this site, which is currently vacant.
Okay, thank you, Daphne. At this point, we'd like to open the public hearing at uh five oh three. Uh and if there are others on the call that wish to speak, uh just you will have an opportunity uh after the applicant provides their variance request. Uh you would have an opportunity to speak uh you know in support or against the requested variance. Uh Daphne did read the application. Does the city have any other information to share pertaining to the site or the development?
Um so at this time, they um the applicant has gone through a concept review with plan commission. Um and then they will still need to get um either, you know, they have to rezone for general implementation plan. And then get a specific implementation plan for what they plan to do um at this location. So they're still in the middle of getting, you know, all the processes um approved.
Okay. Thank you. Then uh at this point, if there uh Dwayne or John, if you would like to speak on behalf of the uh the application, please state your name and you can proceed with presenting your variance request.
Um John, I'll start Dwayne. John Lee J with LZ Ventures. Um a number of years ago, we acquired the property next door to this and built a project called the Foundry. It's been very successful. Uh at the time Middleton and us were uh hoping to get more density around and to support Greenway. Uh after that building was done, um Market West came in. It's been very successful. It took us um up until, I don't know, four months ago to reacquire this piece of property. It was transferred, ownership was transferred back to uh artist group and they were holding out hope the building apart or office building there at some point. And as we all know, COVID and post uh New World Order, the uh I the apartment, I'm sorry, the office market is pretty soft. So um they were very inclined to allow us to reacquire the site. When we set about looking at the site, it seems like if there was any place, a taller, more dense building would make sense. It would be right here. Um so we put together a concept, brought it to plan commission for feedback. I think we got, Daphne can correct me if I'm wrong, very positive feedback about it. So we submitted the request to the FAA about um whether this variance would be an issue for them or not. We got back the approved, however they term it, but the letter of compliance or whatever it is from the FAA which brought us um in front of the zoning board to ask for a variance for the height. Um the current stated density on the application is probably short of where we're gonna end up. There's probably gonna be more like a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five units. But it's not gonna change the box of the building at all. This the massing in the space and the height is gonna stay the same. Uh I just think we've understated how many units are gonna be in the building and the and the opening. Um with that, I can let Dwayne kind of walk you through uh what we're planning on doing here. And uh so you can evaluate whether you think it's uh worthy of a variance or not.
Daphne, could I share my screen? I put together a couple of slides and I did add one additional one that I wanted to go over.
Yeah, you should be able to go ahead and share.
So I'm hoping everybody can see my screen.
Yep.
So my name is Dwayne Johnson with Kenothian Bruce Architects and as stated, we're requesting a variance for the airport height limitation zoning elevation for sixteen thirty Aspen Commons. The locator map here on my screen is looking south, so the airport would be one point four miles behind us in this view. And the foundry apartments with which John mentioned is here in the foreground. Behind us is the Greenway Center Building, which is to our south. And we are proposing a twelve-story like John said, somewhere between a hundred and thirty-five and a hundred and forty-five unit apartment building. We're still working through the unit mix. The airport height limitation for this site is set at ten seventy-five. Um the penthouse, let me switch here. So here's a aerial view or a view down of the building. We have portions, the penthouse area here is currently at an elevation of ten ninety-five, which Daphne said. And then there are other portions of the building that are lower. The rooftop area here is ten feet lower than that at ten eighty-five, which would equate to either ten or twenty feet um higher than what the established limitation. Um our our height, however, would be consistent with the building to the north, the Greenway Center Building. Or I'm sorry, to the south. Um which shows up right here that we're within a foot or two of the height of that building. They're actually a touch higher than us. Um and then we're substantially lower than the Wisconsin Trade Building, which is across Greenway Station from us. Um in the current building codes, any building over seventy-five feet is considered a high-rise building in that has more stringent and expansive um infrastructure requirements, which obviously carry a cost as well. So there's diminishing diminishing returns once you get over that height, but can't add more density or or additional units or floor um area. And so staying, getting too close to that height makes them less feasible. I wanted to show to our, this is a couple of floor plans of of the current building. Um are typically um high-rise buildings are able to have multiple levels of underground parking. Um like the Continental Building we did for John, East Wash has three levels of underground parking. This building, however, with the less than ideal soils, we're not able to go down that low. So we still need covered parking. So our current plan has one level of basement underground parking, and then we had to pull two levels of that parking above grade, which worked well for this site because it's facing in the rear, the existing parking ramp, which wouldn't be beautiful for units to look out. Um but it does mean that the building gets higher or, you know, there aren't as many units within this area. So those two levels are shown here in gray. We were able to still keep um apartment units facing Aspen Commons where we do wanna look out on and have walk-up units. So those are these areas kind of in the front here, flanking the Aspen Commons. Um we feel like this solution is the right solution for the site, but it did add additional height to the building. Um this graphic here, which is in your packet, um shows just our height and how it relates to the Greenway Center Office Building to ourself. Um as John had mentioned, the project was also submitted to the FFA FAA. Um and the height that we actually submitted it at was ten ninety-seven, which is two feet higher than our current design. Um and we received confirmation back from them that it did not create an obstruction standard, standard, and that it wasn't a hazard to air navigation. And all those letters and their report are within your packet as well. Um so we believe that Middleton's demand for housing and the unique location and neighboring conditions of this site, along with the FFA FAA ruling, make it a candidate for a variance request for additional height. We thank you for your time and we look forward to any questions you have.
Uh anybody on the committee have questions for uh John? Or Dwayne?
I have a question, and I don't know if you guys have the answer or not, but the um the map that is associated with with this um ordinance, where did that derive from? Was that an FFA or not FFA, sorry, F? Uh FAA, there we go. Um derived map, or is that something the city came up with, or where did that stem?
Yeah, so our like three-mile height limitation, I believe it was um under direction of the FAA, but that but that itself is part of our zoning ordinance. So that was part of what the city had determined. Um I believe the airport committee is looking at, you know, kind of revising some of that language to meet. Um because I think the FAA has revised their language as well. Um so it's changed a little bit, but um right now it is just part of city zoning.
Okay, so potentially the same people who uh consulted on, you know, making those heights are now saying that they're fine.
Yeah, so um I believe what the height limitation zoning does is um it's just kind of like a flag, you know, that's the that's kind of like the maximum. And then anything above that um flags the FAA, so they have the ability to review anything like that. Um and then there are cases like these where um you know, those they'll look at it and say, you know, we don't see any issue with it. You know, there are other tall buildings nearby as well. Um so then they can waive it. Um so that height limitation is just kind of that like notification point for the FAA to begin, you know, any review processes. Um and so anything lower than that, you know, they don't really care about. Um so that's mostly what that is there for.
Okay.
So you were referring to that ten seventy-five, right, Daphne?
Yes, that tends to be five. Um I believe I had like a map where you just saw a bunch of like blue lines.
Yep.
Um yeah, and so those are the different height limitations um that we have.
So I understand that correctly. That's that's not necessarily a number set by the FAA. That's something set by the city as sort of a trigger to uh, okay.
Correct, yeah.
What what is the rationale of the ten seventy-five?
Um I didn't show you the whole map, but basically um you know, it's
I saw the whole map. I'm just wondering rationale of ten seventy-five.
Yeah, there was some calculation, you know, as you move away from the airport, you know, buildings can obviously get a little bit higher and higher. Um and so that's, you know, they had some kind of calculation when they created that map, so um ten seventy-five, um you know, it's it's measured from sea level. Um and so, yeah, that's
I can help if Daphne says it's okay.
Yeah.
This is Mark Opitz. I I just I just was attending the airport commission meeting and heard their discussion. Um so the way our height limitations, only ordinance is set up is it's based on grids as as you uh I think are aware. And those grids uh as opposed to like contours that come up in elevation as a slope from the airport. So the grids are uh the number that's in the grid uh is a trigger for for doing this type of analysis, for height analysis. And it's a um it it, you know, it it it's if the ordinance were based more on contours, there's, I think, a very high probability that this wouldn't even have needed a variance. The building to, so the airport commission statement is uh that on general principle, they don't like to see having zone exceptions, but in this case, the airport manager has no objection. It shouldn't be a factor for air aircraft operations because of the existing building to the south. And then there's a communication tower beyond on your so the airport commission was comfortable with that being the summation of the meeting, that they do not have an objection because of and and that it won't have operation uh operational impact because of the existing building to the south. Um and obviously the FAA needs to weigh in, and it's my understanding that the FAA has indicated no objections. Is that right, Daphne?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Daphne. Yeah, Paul, if you don't mind, I have a question.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead. I will first, uh John, were you done at?
Well, go go ahead. I'll take it after you.
Okay, uh go ahead, Dave.
I just, I noticed in our information that we read for the meeting that there was no evidence of a variance given for the building to the south, I believe it was. And that being said, did the FAA review that one? The building itself was the FAA signing off on the building that went over heights and back higher than the subject is proposed to be?
Yeah, um I'm not sure if they did or not. Um I'm sure, you know, when they submitted their documentation, um I think it was sent also to the state for, you know, building plan review as well. So I I believe at that point, they probably would have notified FAA, but um we don't have anything in our in our city records that show that.
And one other question is uh I don't know the age of that building. You know, I'm new to this committee for the last three years, but uh why wasn't that brought in front of this committee for a variance at that time?
I can help explain that at Daphne if you'd like. So that building, I believe, was built in is it two thousand? Do you know when that was built, Daphne, exactly?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, so that was before the airport adopted height limitation zoning, I believe. Uh or at least as it related to the airport reconstruction was placed in two thousand three to two thousand five, so that obviously changed um uh or potentially changed height limitation zoning. I'd have to trace the exact history, but they were, the building is old enough that it uh it likely did not trigger a height limitation zoning ordinance review at the time.
Okay, thank you.
It it was also done in two pieces. That building was originally built, I want to say, as a six-story building. Hmm. And then a few years later, they did a vertical expansion to it of either five stories.
You are right. I had forgotten about that.
I remember watching him do it going, that's pretty cool, because it was, you know, they kept it operational when they did it.
Yeah, I had forgotten all the cash. It's funny how one forgets things after many years. Um
I want to circle back. John, did you have a follow-up question?
I have a couple. Actually, the first one is just a clarification. The Greenway Center building is actually to the north of this building, is it not?
So.
Somebody was talking about south.
Hold on, the found the foundry is north of this building, and I believe Greenway is south.
Really?
And the airport is even further north. So this, yeah, we're looking south in this
So
aerial.
Okay, because my map suggests it's to the north, but that's okay. Um the other question I have is, are we the penthouse is the twelfth or the thirteenth floor?
That is the thirteenth level.
Okay, so we're approving that as well as the twelfth floor, which is above the height level.
Right, so the parapet of the roof is ten feet above and the roof of the penthouse is twenty feet above the ten seventy-five.
Okay.
And that's a non-occupied mechanical penthouse?
There is some community area up there, and then the roof is used as a rooftop terrace or, you know, it has people could be up there or would be up there.
So the penthouse isn't a living space?
It's not a living space, but it would have a community room or, you know, and mechanical space.
Yeah, we're contemplating a walking path up there and a dog run and a few other things for for tenant usage up on the roof deck.
Did you have other questions, John?
No, I don't.
Uh Mark and Daphne, is the penthouse considered uh part you know, part of that in the encroachment? I mean, I'm not asking that clearly. Is that considered? I mean, are we only considering the floor, or do we have to consider the penthouse too?
I think we would consider the penthouse as well. Um you know, it's the total height of the ten ninety-five is what we're considering. That includes the penthouse.
Okay.
The the issue isn't the use as much as it's just the structure um penetrating the appropriate of the uh height limitation zoning ordinance cap.
Okay.
Um so sorry if I missed this, just quick question. If if there, this wasn't, you know, within three miles of the airport, what would what height could they go in this area? Like, what does the zoning map allow them to go if it wasn't three miles within?
Yeah, so
I just want to make sure that we don't have to grant like two variances, one for, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um so this area is different. So basically all of Greenway Station is a a planned development district. So like a P PUD, PDD. Um and so they don't really specify any heights in there. Uh and so, you know, they will have to go through, you know, a rezoning to another PDD essentially. Um and so you know, they would establish the height through that process.
Okay.
So this could be twenty stories.
Uh it probably cannot be twenty stories because of, you know, FAA regulation.
Right, we're talking about if it weren't within the airport.
Oh, yes. Um that could be something they would propose. Um I highly doubt our plan commission would be amenable to something of that height. Um but you know, any any developer could come in and propose anything they want. Um but it's up to our plan commission to approve that.
Uh let me help. I I didn't research the documents in preparation for this meeting, but often oftentimes a general implementation plan establishes maximum height parameters for us for uh for the planned development district. Um and in this case, I'm not aware of of what the specific maximum height is for in the general implementation plan. Uh Daphne, did you just say that, or did I miss that?
Right, yeah, they they don't establish a height.
They they don't. And so as Daphne then correctly noted, um individual buildings as they come in have quite a bit of leeway to um which is, you know, part of the reason we do planned development districts. But some other PDDs will have parameters uh that cap the height. In this case, it sounds like such parameters not exist other than airport height limitation zone.
I have another question, and is the, are these buildings in any way in a approach to the airport, a runway approach?
The answer to that is yes. The north-south turf runway uh is roughly lined up with this area. Uh as is the existing building to the south, of course. I mean, it's directly adjacent. As is the very large communications tower near Menards. And so as the airport commission actually just discussed this very same question, uh John. And for for the reasons of what I just said, it is highly unlikely or or it, any future potential expansion or improvement of the north-south runway would be hamstrung by both the existing building to the south as well as the communications tower uh a couple of miles south, which is obviously much, much taller. So um that doesn't mean the north-south runway can't ever be expanded and usable. It just wouldn't be rated for certain types of instrument approaches. I didn't want to get too too detailed with aeronautics speak, but you know, there's there's uh constraints, but it this but approving this building would not curtail the ability to expand the north-south runway. It just might not be usable to for certain aeronautical operations. I and I don't know the answer to that question, but in general, speaking in general terms.
Um I just pulled up the street view of what we're seeing. So on the very right is the foundry. Um here's the Greenway Center Building, and this building will be, you know, in the space between. And then here's the Trade Center Building, which is much higher.
Now this is looking west?
Yes.
Will you be able to flip to almost like a plan view so we can see the the airport? Just to kind of finish up on John's comment? So while she's doing that, Mark, uh you, I I would assume then the airport still has access if they ever do expand in the east-west axes, right?
Um yeah, I mean, that's not, that's a decision that the city has not made, but um there are other airport, this is about a mile north, or this site is about a mile south, maybe a little more than a mile south of the airport. Um it's hard, it's hard to see, but if you if maybe Daphne can quickly draw a line um from the runway to the north, under the word transit at the very top of the screen, that's where the north-south runway is. Um just to the right of that, yeah, right there, exactly.
Okay.
So that
It says it's about one point six miles.
Yeah.
What it says in
Yeah, and um and whether that's exactly lined up with the runway, I'm not sure. It's it's close to parallel. Um it's a little hard to tell, but uh it the the runway is probably slightly, the center line of the runway probably goes slightly west of the site. But, you know, it's 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 an academic argument at that point, so it's one point six miles away and the existing obstruction to the south, if that, if it were considered an obstruction, the FAA apparently does not consider it as such, which is why they sign off.
Are there other questions, the applicants?
I I do have one other question, and that is the description of this, which says is one hundred and twenty-three unit twelve-story residential building. It's actually a thirteen-story, is it not?
Yeah, so that was just con counting the residential units. Um and then that was also the information we had received during their concept review. So that was you know, when when they had just, you know, kind of acquired the property again and were looking to put something on there. Um so at the concept, it was at a hundred twenty-three, but um it sounds like they're they're adding, you know, ten or twenty more units. Um but, you know, anything that they add would still have to be below that hundred ninety-five feet.
But we're approving both the top floor, which is the twelfth floor and the penthouse.
Correct, up to that ten ninety-five.
Right.
Right.
Are there other questions for the applicant? In fact, you know, I I do have a question. If you can uh it it discuss a little bit about the hardship. Um you mentioned in the letter uh primarily uh cost, right? Um if you could elaborate on what you're presenting as hardships for the project?
Uh for, it's a it's really a two-front war. Um a s- a a four-story wood frame building, which is all we could do with a single level of underground parking, would be about forty-four to fifty units. And the economics are awful with that project for the site and where it's at and the cost of what we have to do there. Um we also think Um, we also think it would be underdeveloping the site grossly, so. Uh, I'm pretty sure I'm not answering the hardship part of this, but we think that. Um, once we get past that seventy-five feet to go up to where, uh, the south building already is. And fill that envelope with units. Um, does two things, it adds density where density should be. And then we pay for, uh, one foundation and one roof with twelve units underneath it, instead of four units underneath it. Um, now, obviously, the heavier construction costs more money, but it's not a lot more money in today's market. It used to be significantly different, in the last couple of years, the, the podium-style building and the wood-framed buildings have become. Very expensive to build as well. So we, we think on both fronts, the. If we had to come back with a four-story building with one level of parking. Uh, I don't know that we would be doing that anytime in the near future. Um, to justify the additional parking and go to the heavy structure. It made sense to take it up to the height of the, uh, adjacent building. And then, um, seek the variance to do the additional height. So, I, I think on both of those fronts. The, uh, shorter version's not economically feasible in today's market, doesn't mean it won't be, and then, you know, at some point in the future. And then we also think it would be severely underdeveloping the site.
So there's still a hardship between eleven stories and thirteen.
Yeah, once you, once you get past the seventy-five feet, you gotta go as high as you can to make the math help you. Because of the concrete construction and all the life safety things you have to do in the high-rise building. Um, the additional wind loads on the, on the windows and all the other things. Um, we're struck, we have the project on Pleasant View right now that we're working on, and they're eight-story buildings, and we're struggling mightily. With costs on those right now, just what's happened in the last fourteen months since we started down the road of, of getting Pleasant View started. So if we don't get the maximum number of units in this box, it's just the math's gonna be very difficult to make it work. Um, and we obviously didn't want to go any higher than the south building because of the alignment with the runway and the other things. Um. If you told us we had to do a ten-story building there, I don't think it would make sense, the extra two units, I mean, the extra two floors are going to help make sense of it. Um, and I know that the four-story building, cause I, I, I did the performative before we bought the lot. Uh, makes little to no sense right now, so. That's just, just kind of the world we live in right now, so if we, we're asking for the maximum amount of density, we can put in that cube. On that site next to Greenway, to try to make the math work.
And John, I think there's something to be said about the parking as well, not being able to go down below grade. Two to three levels with that, that we are moving. A good amount of that parking up into the areas that otherwise would have likely been.
Well, that's, that's a great point, Dwayne, because two-thirds of two of the above-grade floors are being dedicated to parking and not units.
Right.
And the reason for that? Great, is it, uh, uh, poor soils, or is it just cost that you don't want to go?
It's both, we had, we had underpinning and some things we had to do at foundry. And now, if we were to try to go down three stories underneath foundry, we're gonna get back into the poor soils, and we're gonna get to where we have to try to hold up. Foundry while we're doing it.
So primarily, primarily, it's poor soils?
Primarily, it's both, because with poor soils comes cost, which, you know, it, it's a different kind of earth retention system. It's undermining the existing building next door, if we do one level of parking, we're not gonna undermine the foundry's parking garage and have to deal with all of that. Good stuff.
Yeah, I was just looking at that soils report today, John, and it was a mix of fill, and then I got into a lot of clay and silt and like. They're just not great.
Yeah, we, we still may end up with some, you know, micro piles or some other stuff to hold this building up. But if we had to go down three and a half levels, hold all that stuff up and keep foundry out of it. Uh, um, I know it would push the budget out of reach for us, I know it would.
Was this one of the areas that flooded back in two thousand eighteen?
Uh, foundry did not flood, the whole, everything around us had a lot of problems, as we all know. But foundry did not, we didn't get any water even in the parking garage at foundry.
So this site had some problems?
No, I mean, this site's right next to foundry, and it's, it was undisturbed, so.
Are there other?
Can't speak to what happened on this site, I just know that, you know, we went like everybody else did when the storm happened. Um, and when we could finally get over there and get our people over there, we were, you know, the parking garage was intact and. You know, we all know what happened, I mean, Costco and everybody else over there had all kinds of issues, and, and foundry did not, so we were very fortunate.
Other questions for the applicants? If there are none, I would close the public portion of this meeting and then open up the, uh. Discussion between board members at five thirty-six. So, Mark, I, one question I have, um, you know, with, uh, Middleton's plan for density. Uh. So, is having a higher-density project more in keeping with the city's plan?
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
We, we have seen, uh, and been supportive of plans over the last half-decade plus. To infill sites in the Greenway area, this is essentially the last green site, if you will. We also have seen plans to, um. Convert some parking fields in the area, obviously, we're just talking about this site, but to answer your question generally, yes, we support. Uh, strongly support adding housing into this area to help make it mixed-use, which is very consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments from board members?
Uh, yeah, I guess that, I think that the hardships are twofold, but I would not select the same ones that John did. We, we can't base our hardships off of monetary, um. Um, either go-no-gos, I guess, so I guess the two hardships that I have in my mind is, is one that. Um, you did kind of touch on, but it is the soil, and I think you kind of alluded to that as well, Paul, the, the poor soil. Um, making the, the building go up essentially two stories, and without that, it would be under. And I think the other main hardship, I would say, is that the reason that this, um. Part of the zoning code was put into place is to prevent airplanes to fly into, you know, the building, and since we got sign-off from. The, um, FAA, I, I don't think that hardship, or that. That rule really applies much anymore, like, I think, I think it's there. Now that I understand a little better from Daphne's explanation, like, it's there to, as a threshold, to. Put this extra step in process to make sure it's okay, and we essentially found out from that letter that it is okay. So to me, the, between the two of those should suffice as the, the hardship for this, this project to move forward.
Can you restate the hardships again, please?
Uh, the one is the poor soil. It's the, the poor soil, soil of the site. Um, doesn't allow for parking to go under, and if. If we do, you, they didn't have those two extra floors of parking. This wouldn't be, it wouldn't go over that, uh, ten seventy-five.
Right.
And then the main one, I think that's kind of a secondary hardship, but the, the main hardship I see is that this, this rule is put in place, right? To not go above a certain height due to the, uh, air traffic in the area. And it was based off of a plan that was. Um, consulted by the FAA, it's a broader plan that doesn't, that's not site-specific, and. Um. They received a letter from the FAA. Saying that it is okay, so to me, that. Constitutes a. I guess it, it's kind of a hardship, but it's more of a disproving why the rule is there in the first place, right? Like, it's, it's, the intent of the rule is to keep airplanes from not flying into this building, I think the, the letter kind of proves that. FAA at least is, is fine with that.
Other discussion between members? Uh, Mark, Daphne alluded to the fact that you had, you had met with airport zoning, uh, and is there going to be some revision to the airport height? Limitation zoning map?
Eventually, there, uh, I think eventually there will be. Um, we don't have anything in the works right now, but, um, we recently completed an airport master plan. And one of the things I'd like to do in the near future is work with the Bureau of Aeronautics to update the HLZO. So, it's not something, it's, it's on our list to do.
Other, uh, comments from board members?
Yeah, Paul, I think we've, I think we've talked about the, uh, hardships, and I think I agree with all that.
Okay.
Uh, I think it makes sense to consider this project, I'd rather see this parking elevated. Above ground than below ground than to disturb the, uh, surrounding neighbors. I think there's less impact to the neighboring properties this way than there would be if they tried to. Develop a three-story underground parking area, which could. Create issues for ground stability in the whole neighborhood, so I, I, I think this one makes sense to me.
Is, is there a stormwater runoff study on this?
Um, they have not submitted that yet, that would be, um, at the time of their, um, I believe, specific implementation plan. Um, so they have to go, you know, they still have several hoops that they'll have to jump through, um, in order to get the full approval. Um, so this is just basically the first, um, approval that they've gotten, or that they will need to get. Um, and then they'll need the general implementation plan, which would allow for residential at this site. And then the second would be the specific implementation plan, which will have stormwater, um, all the units, parking. You know, everything like that, how the building will look, all of that.
But that doesn't need to be considered at this time?
Yes, not, not at this time.
Other, other thoughts, comments, discussion? If there are none, I would, uh. Open it up for someone to make a motion for the variance?
A motion to accept the variance with the hardships that I previously stated.
Okay, that would be the, uh, the poor soils and the, uh. You know, the zoning code and the height, you know, kicking it into that review, uh, and they had received. Uh, a notice of no obstruction from the FAA, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Mark and Daphne, I don't know if adding any verbiage about complying with the city's density. Standards or plan going forward, this is more in keeping with that?
You mean consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, essentially?
Yes, correct.
The building is consistent with the. Uh, goals as expressed in the city's comprehensive plan, or in the planned development district, or the general implementation plan, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see any harm in that, I mean, I think that's a good, that would be a good addition.
Okay. And then, um, obviously, there, there are some stipulations in the FAA document that within five days after construction of the greatest height, they have to notify. Uh. Electronically, the FAA, correct? There's certain stipulations they have.
I think adding some language. Yeah, adding some language that, you know, in adherence with all FAA regulations, or, I forgot how we've handled that in the past. We've, we've probably had language like that several years ago, and we considered a similar one, but, but basically, that it's. Uh, approve the variance, uh, and one of the contingencies are, is that, you, you know, that the, the developer, uh. Uh, constructed in accordance with all applicable, with all FAA regulations, you know, in compliance with all FAA regulations or something like that.
Right. Okay, so Justin made a motion, is there a second?
I'd second, Paul.
Dave, you seconded, okay? Uh, then all in favor of accepting or approving the variance signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any not in favor of the variance? Okay, then that would, uh, pass four-two-zero on a voice vote. So at this point, we'll close the. Close the meeting at five forty-six. Um. Are there any other issues that the board would like to address? If not, we can accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Dave, is there a second?
A second.
Justin? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, meeting's adjourned.
Thanks to everyone for your time and consideration, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, bye.